Hey. We'll probably get started about 12:05 ish or a little past that. Starting shortly, please have a seat. We'll start our town hall. Come on over. I know we have some people that are virtual. We'll wait a few minutes. Let's see. How are we doing? Marlon, are you good? Okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started if people feel comfortable with the starting. Good? Everybody's good out there? We have some people who are virtual. Welcome to our town hall. Thank you for being here. I appreciate your patience with us trying to accommodate a change in venue, but also a change in format. I'm gonna ask one more time for the virtual word, Marlon. We're okay? All right, we're gonna move ahead. So thank you for being here, each of you. Remember, we started these town halls doing COVID in an effort to talk about our COVID response and to have a place for questions to be asked and answered. Today, please, if you have a question, when we have questions, come to the microphone so those that are virtual and everybody else can hear you. I'm Bernice Johnson Eames. I serve as the president here at York College, and I'm very happy for you all to be here. And thank you for the time. First and foremost, I want to thank each of you for everything that you have done for us to be back in person and for us to be in this space together. I hope that each of you feel as if we've been trying to do what we can for you to have the resources you need. And I want you all to continue to come back to campus and enjoy what is a wonderful York experience. I want to thank all of those that have taken part in and taken advantage of the services of the Welcome Center. As you walk into the campus, we have a newly established Welcome Center that was put together by the wonderful team here to answer your questions and to take care of your needs. I want to thank the faculty and staff for making sure that the students know about the Welcome Center and for directing them there so that they can get their needs met. Our in-person events have been very successful. If you are not aware, I know that we have students from all over who have been able to celebrate different affinity months, celebrations, and different things along the way. And we have tried our best to engage the community in a way that gets people back to being together and also support the faculty that are here on campus and elsewhere in teaching the students. Last but not least, in this section of my update, thank you each for your patience with the construction. Is our new entrance just beautiful? It is gorgeous. We now have ADA and compliant, ADA compliant entrances, and they are all being equipped. We will eventually have all kinds of additional work done, but I will let VP Charles talk about that in his update. Let me thank the leadership of the student government and the faculty caucus for all their help. We do have fully functioning senate that is meeting next week. And we also have quite a bit of our committees that have been filled up, and we're very happy about that. Just as some reminders, the Day of Giving is on November 29th. It is the day in which we ask everybody to give back to York. Please, please, please tell people to give and make sure that if you are able, that you do so also. Our campus faculty and staff holiday party is December 1st. Please mark your calendars for that. We'll be celebrating together, and we hope to see you there. I am in the process this academic year of making sure that we move ahead with our executive searches because we do have a few interim roles on our cabinet, first of which being our interim provost role, which search has started. Thank you so much to the search committee and to the chair for all the hard work. Please let anybody know if you have a question. That will be followed by the searches for the other cabinet members that are interim. As a reminder, we have interns because during COVID, we were asked to not search for permanent people in that roles, in those roles. We are very busy trying to initiate some CUNY reconnect work, which is reconnecting with students that we need to bring back to the campus. And that will increase our commitment to our enrollment, but also our commitment to watching out for those who may have stopped out or dropped out along the way, in particular during COVID. So thank you for the leadership of my team in that work. If you all did not see, we did put together an annual report, and I want to give a shout out to Lori Hefner and her team and Dana Trimboli for the beautiful annual report that is mostly, mostly digital. We only printed a few, so if you have not printed it out or taken a chance to read it, please do so. All right? So at this time, I'm going to ask VP Charles Bozian to come ahead and give his update, and then Charles will be followed by VP Karen Williams. And then I will have a few more announcements, and then we will have questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few comments here. Wanted to update everyone on where we stand with regard to food service on campus. It's been a, it's been a journey, but we are, we are getting there. First off, the hours at the cafe have been extended to 6:00 PM, so that will accommodate folks that have evening classes because most classes start at 6:00, so they'll be open. And when I walked by last night, it was 6:20, and there were still people there, so we've expanded hours, and part of that was needing to hire additional, additional bodies there. We don't, we don't own that. That is, that is run by an outside firm. They've hired the initial people. Now we can, we can keep longer hours and serve more people. We have installed the five microwaves downstairs. They are being cleaned on a daily basis. That was a journey as well. We had ordered them before the start of the semester. Supply chain issues are real, and they finally came in a couple of weeks ago, and we've been installed. And the also the shelf that they're on has been replaced. Additional cleaning supplies have been added, so we really will move forward in, in a organized way and keep those clean and have that as a good resource for students and staff. Anybody that was out here yesterday might have gotten a sample of pizza. They were testing, they were testing the pizza ovens yesterday in the kitchen, and apparently they handed out pizza to about 75 people. And so we're going live with pizza on Monday, and there'll be, there'll be announcement, there'll be, you know, an announcement campus-wide. You'll be able to order pizza on a QR code and then go pick it up when it's ready. So it's really, I mean, I think it's gonna be a really nice addition. My understanding is previously pizza was the number one seller in the cafeteria, so that, that should be, I think, a welcome, a welcome addition to the menu going forward. We have had a food truck out front for a few days. That food truck seemed to disappear regardless of we followed up with them many times, and they just are not, they're not coming back. We are exploring other options. We would like to have a food truck, a rotating cadre of food trucks a few days a week to provide, again, additional variety and some alternatives to what's being offered on campus. Lastly, we are exploring options with regards to the cafeteria downstairs. We are having an assessment done of the equipment that is currently in place. We will be doing an RFP going forward. That's gonna take us a bit of time, but we, our plan is to move forward. Perhaps maybe on a reduced scale. I mean, that's a large cafeteria downstairs, and we need to figure out exactly right sizing that and having the right, the right vendor in place. So we'll go through that process over the next few months and make, make a determination of how to move forward. But that's gotta go through an RFP process with, with CUNY Central and the like, so we will get that done. Any questions on food? Okay. So, did you have a question? Could you step up to the mic?
Hello. Oh, my question was, do you foresee us having any, like, cafe or food services toward the end of the semester or into the new year? Or like, do you have a timetable?
Won't be, it won't be this semester. I mean, the pizza's Monday, but it's as far as the cafeteria go, that's gonna be a bit more of a project. There will be equipment that needs to be replaced. It's gonna be, and we have to select the vendor first, order equipment, do the like, so it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen very quickly. But we will go, we will start that process, and we will get it done. All right? Anything else? Okay, so as the, as the president mentioned, we got beautiful new doors on the four, four main entrances of the academic core building. The turnstiles, we are actively working through a project now to integrate the turnstiles with our fire safety equipment with our, with our video, video monitoring across campus. We'll be upgrading all of that over the next few months. So we expect that the turnstiles will be online in the spring, but it will be with a complete overhaul of, of our video, our video system on campus to provide additional security and, and, and card access for various rooms. So it's an integrated approach. We have the funding to do it, and our expectation is that we will be, it will be completed before the end of the academic year. That's what, that's what the plan is. The pack, pack interior upgrade is kicking off. That's gone out the bid. The bids are back. A vendor will be selected. It'll be approximately an 18-month renovation. That's a very significant overhaul on the interior. Included in that will be a mechanical system upgrade, so there'll be new air conditioning, new heating. There was a new roof that was recently completed, so it's really a complete renovation of the entire pack inside and out. So we're very excited about that, and that's, again, scheduled to kick off sort of in the April-May timeframe. Second, the track and field also has gone out the bid. The bids are back. Vendor will be selected. That will kick off again sometime in the spring. That will, again, will be an 18-month project, complete renovation, new field, new track, an interior, an interior field to play on addition to the field events that normally go with track and field. We're very excited about that. Also on the docket is refurbishment of the tennis courts. We have funding for that as well, and we'll be working hopefully with the, with the U.S. Tennis Association to work in, in Queens to give us some additional funding and give us some guidance as far as vendors to use and like. So we're very excited about that. So really, it's gonna be transformative as far as athletic facilities. So I talked about, I talked about the, the doors and the installation of the video security system. The, the, the last project that I want to highlight is the HPC Hot Water Loop, which restored heating and cooling to the, to the, to the athletic facilities. They're just filling in the dirt now, and that should all be completed in the next two to three weeks. So it'll be, everything will be restored, the connection between the two buildings and all the facilities. So I know that right now there's a bit of a detour to get around and get into the HPC. That'll all be gone, we're hoping, right after, right after Thanksgiving. There are 13 capital projects in general happening. Some of them are not visible. Sort of, if you're walking by, you wouldn't know that something is happening. Some of them, we're replacing that. An oil tank, we're doing, we'll be doing something that will be very visible. We'll also be doing all the lighting, switching to LED lighting in all the hallways. So there's, there'll be things that'll be very visible and will improve quality of life, better lighting across the board. But there's many projects that you won't necessarily see, but will really improve a wide variety of things going on on campus. So those are all sort of midstream. Some of them have already kicked off. Some of them are about to kick off. But there's, there's gonna be a time in about a year that literally there will be 13 projects going on simultaneously. So that's a huge undertaking. The, our B&amp;G, Kachi and our B&amp;G folks will be very busy. And Jen, our new, the chief superintendent, and so we really look forward to this. So we had the seven caper projects that, that, that came to fruition and had a groundbreaking or had a ribbon cutting last, last December. Well, there'll be many more to come over the next two years, so we really look forward to that. Any questions? Okay, next up, VP Karen.
Good afternoon, everyone. Oh, there's my slide. So the end of the semester is fast approaching, and as we are getting to the end of the semester and final exams, I just wanted to take an opportunity to share some critical updates and resources, information or resource information. As you see listed here on my slide, I don't know if you can see that. The, the items that have been updated are regard to mentorship, first-year programming, support groups, assistance with state applications for, for funding and aid. And we've also updated with what we're calling a behavioral intervention and student code of conduct guide. This was a collaborative project between our dean of students, Dean Jane Solnov, and our chair, Tim Kirk, worked to look at the existing policies from York, from CUNY, and some things that we needed to add together to just create a guide for faculty and staff. The goal of this guide is to assist with preventing and managing potentially disruptive exchanges in the classroom. Again, particularly as we are moving toward the holidays and very high-stress times, including final exams in some cases. So this guide is on our Student Affairs website now, and it's available for everyone to review along with the resources. The website itself has been updated to address, again, have webpages for student conduct, the Office of the Ombudsperson, which I'll get into a little bit in a minute, and, and for, for students who need resources and just advise how to go about accessing services in our office. The students will also continue to find support and assistance through the Center for Gender Justice or the Women's Center for Gender Justice, which is housing the food pantry, providing support with financial distress, domestic and partner violence, and, you know, all things women, women's health. And then, again, as we continue to think about mental health resources, the counseling, the counseling center staff is still in place, in place, offering, again, a range of mental health resources for our students, whether onsite and also offsite. This information is also regularly pushed out to the Cardinal app. So if you are a student and you hear my voice and you are not yet on the Cardinal app, please get on it. Oftentimes, I find it's the fastest way for students to get information or at least get a question answered. I also want to take a minute to shout out the Center for Students with Disabilities, who also provides significant support for students experiencing physical, mental, and learning disabilities. And so students, again, if you need support in any of those areas, even if it's something that is, is just now starting to feel like it's coming on, please pay them a visit so that you can receive support in those areas. I just want to, oh, one quick note. For students in distress or if there is an emergency, we are asking again, just to remind you, the first number we want to call for students in distress or having an emergency is public safety, 2222, if you're on campus. Also, you can contact them or you can contact us, and we'll make sure to contact them, or you can contact all of us at the same time. We will get it. But when a message comes to Student Affairs, we will assist in triaging along with staff from Health Services, the Center for Student, the Center for Students with Disabilities, and the counseling staff. So you're seeing some faces on the bottom there because I wanted to give them a quick shout out. First of all, to the Division of Student Affairs for your continued work in supporting our students every day, along with faculty and staff here. I also want to highlight a few of the members listed below, including Dean James Solnov, also our senior director of Wellness and Resources Charmaine Townsill, who oversees multiple offices, including the Women's Center for Gender Justice, the Center for Students with Disabilities, Health Services, Counseling Center, and Veteran Affairs. I also want to recognize Roosevelt Smith, who has been working on our mentoring problems, problems, mentoring program for our first-year students who have been wonderful in assisting with problems before they become real problems. Let me also add Nicole Acevedo in the Center for, I don't know if she's here. She might probably be helping students. She has been a phenomenal resource, particularly assisting students with emergency grant funding, again, with the food pantry and referrals to local resources, and she's been having workshops on campus for helping students get set up with state benefits. So please look out for the next workshop she's doing. She's really doing excellent work. And then finally, many of us have known Savitri Ramaswad for a long time. And so in her current capacity, she serves as the Assistant Director for Student Affairs, and she is the student advocate, the ombuds person. Now, that role is an assistant, assistive and consultative role for students to help you all understand policy. Sometimes you just need someone to kind of explain and break things down for you, help you understand where your next step resources are and how to navigate through complex challenges. And she can sit with you in meetings to hear things explained to you, just to make sure you're understanding. Or you can come and see her if you have a challenge, and she'll have a discussion with you offline and help move the problems forward. So she's my person to get things moved and to remove hindrances so that you can continue about the work of your academics, because that's why you're here. Do you have any questions? Can you come to the mic?
Hi, IVP Williams. I just wanted to make an announcement for all first semester freshmen. You have a survey. We're asking you to evaluate your experience at York so far. Please check your email. And for all undergraduate students, we have a survey launching this spring. We want your feedback on career and workforce preparedness. And again, this is a way for the college to hear from you. We're looking for your feedback, and then we can share this information with IVP Williams and her team.
Thank you, Dr. Heffner. That's extremely important because it will help us to target what needs to be upgraded. Thanks again. Oh, wait. Oh, okay. Any other questions? Okay, if you have anything that comes up later, come see me. I am in 2F01. Thank you.
All right, I think we had about 45 to 50 people online. Thank you for being here. A few more reminders. We do have a veterans event today between 1:00 and 2:00 in person in, in T2D01 in the Academic Core Building. And again, we have senate meeting next week in 3D01 on Tuesday at 12:30. Some other general announcements I want to share is that we did change the format of this meeting. We started having town hall at the beginning of COVID. We would give COVID updates and then just take questions about COVID. And it just came to my mind that it was time for us to do something different, and we tried something different today. I hope the information is helpful. I hope that you will now come to the podium if you just have general questions that anybody in the room can answer. The whole goal is for us to have another place to communicate, to increase transparency and community, and for us to know who is working on what. That's the goal, right? And for everybody to have a place to come to get the information. So I will also ask Claudio Lindo to come to the podium now and just to summarize the, I, what I think to be the amazing email, email migration we just lived through. Everybody give Claudio a round of applause. And, and you do know that I say that a little tongue-in-cheek because I know that are some people that it was not as smooth for, but I know that Claudio's team has been working hard, so I'm gonna let him make some announcements. Good?
Something on already? Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. So on Monday, this past Monday night, we went through the process of migrating faculty and staff emails. This migration started a long time ago, six months of preparation. It's a good, a huge undertaking. These migrations did not impact student email, was only faculty and staff, and there are many pieces of the puzzles. At this point, every single email account and mailbox had been completely migrated. Different than some other campuses that did a transition from one platform to the other and forced the users to look at emails separately on a different platform from the day, from the date of the migration back. We moved every single email over. So those people that have five years, 10 years, 15 years of emails, those emails were migrated. And they're, and they're in a different location that is secure, that is resilient, and it prepares us to a single sign-on identity that is going to move forward this institution to a better place in terms of technology and unification of, of identity. We did have, we did have issues. It is less than half of a percent in terms of all the populations, and we're working directly with Central Office to make sure that not only we address those issues, but we also gain access and control of those appliances and those applications. So in a future, in a future endeavor of support, we can manage that support directly without having to rely on the Central Office. That is in a nutshell. I could stay here talking to you for three hours about email migration, but I don't think that that would be the right thing to do. But if you have any question, please go ahead and ask. If, if you want to take the conversation aside, let us know. Our communication was very, very, very aggressive. We use every single mean of communication available. And, and we, we were very creative on, on, on our communication. It proved, it proved very effective. And we have, to be honest with you, we have a wide spectrum of, of support levels that we found from the person that I would ask, how was immigration? So good. I have my, I have my email on my phone. I have it on the iPad. I have it on the web. I have it on my desktop to the person that I ask, how was your migration? What? I said, okay, let's talk. And we supported those people in the same, in the same passion. Again, you can reach out to me directly. You can reach out to the help desk, create a ticket. And if you see anybody out there from the, from the IT support, they're all trained to provide you with the support. Forty-three people are being deployed throughout the campus to provide support on campus and Forty-three people have been deployed throughout the campus to provide support on campus and remote. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, uh, Chief, do you mind, I know you're busy with something else. Um, I just want to point out that, that our, uh, Public Safety Chief is right here. Do you have any announcements or updates or hello for the, for the people? All right.
Good afternoon, everyone, how's everybody doing today? Good, good, like to hear that. So I'm the Chief James Asen from Public Safety for you that I haven't met, uh, so far. I want to, I want to get a show of hands today, real quick. How many of you know what our office number is? It was mentioned before, show of hands in the crowd here. What is our office number, Public Safety? Phone number? Two-two-two, okay, how many have it saved in their cell phones? Do me a favor, save it in your cell phones, guys. All right, I'll give you the phone number when I get out. I have business cards for our office that has all our information on it, room number. You'd be surprised when I go around here, how many people don't know where we're located or what the number is. So I want everybody to be informed of how to get in touch with us at all times. All right, that's number one. So, something I want to bring up. The, the area around us has seen a pretty significant increase in crime. So we want to be very reactive in protecting our community and our students here, and our staff and faculty as well. So some of the things we're looking to try to do is create a shuttle program. And what that would essentially do is a shuttle would pick up students, staff and faculty from, say, Guy Brewer, and would take you to the Parsons and Sutton area, I'm sorry, Sutton and Archer, and Parsons and, uh, Jamaica, and kind of those main areas of transportation. So this, this does take a little time, all right? We're in the process of working it out right now and trying to get that facilitated for you guys. But in the meantime and in-between time, as we like to say, we don't want to wait on those things to start taking proactive measures. So you will start to see my officers or our officers outside, uh, on the, kind of the perimeter area, um, starting to scan for IDs and ask for information out there. And why that's important is we don't, we want to prevent, uh, trespassers coming onto campus. It hasn't happened too often, but we do notice a spike in activity because obviously the weather's getting colder. So it, it does tend to happen. So if you start, you know, being screened outside as you come in, don't be alarmed, all right? It's just a proactive measure that we're taking to kind of keep, keep this facility as safe as possible. Also, there's a, we've changed the way we do patrols, so there's a lot more perimeter patrolling now, uh, by vehicle and by foot. And since we've done that over the last two months, we've noticed some of the, uh, activity happening and related to drugs uh, on the perimeter of the campus has actually gone down significantly. Uh, we've also made some contacts at the, uh, Forty Projects here on South Road, and they've been a great ally, uh, of watching the back of our campus for us and helping us out and be on our eyes and ears from the community. So there's some other efforts we're, we're doing on that, um, in that realm, trying to get our local partners from the outside to, to help us out as well, uh, while we continue to increase our staff internally. All right, so I'll be around for questions in the back. I also have our business cards, which I want everybody to stop by and get one for me, all right? Please, and program these numbers in your phone, so if you ever need us, we're just a phone call away, thank you.
And I want to thank all of Public Safety and for to our latinas, thank you both, thank you, thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate you. All right, as a reminder, please don't miss the Veterans Day event. Are there questions from the Zoom? No questions from the Zoom, all right? Are there questions in the room? Oh, yes. Or announcements, updates, anything?
We have a comment. Supposed to do this with a little bit of big, students! Time to register. Please go see your advisor if you haven't already. If there are things that need to be worked out, we can help talk you through. I mentioned Savitri Rampasad early. But you want to make sure your class is still there waiting for you when you need to take it. You have the power, and you have this power when you register. So registration is open now, please see your advisor, and thank you very much.
We have a question online?
Very important announcement, please register, please register.
President?
Yes.
We have a question online?
Okay.
I feel more safe entering college from Science Building to the Academic Core through the Cardinal Walk. Is it possible to open it on Saturdays?
Okay, a little louder Veronica, just one more time so that the chief can hear you, and I, I'm sure he will follow up.
I feel more safe entering college from, from the Science Building to the Academic Core through the Cardinal Walk. Is it possible to open it on Saturdays?
All right, chief, have you noted that, and you're gonna look, look, okay, very good. Thank you. You have another question or a comment? Uh, have to be on the microphone so everybody can hear. Your question might help somebody else.
Um, hi, good afternoon, President Eads. Uh, my name is Leah Ravello, I just wanted to, um, give a little bit of a speech on, um, the Center for Students with Disabilities. Um, so I wanted to thank you guys for this opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Leah, I'm a third-year occupational therapy student at York College. I first had gotten my bachelor degree at SUNY New Poles, and I was actually very unaware of what the Center for Students with Disabilities was. When I came to this school, I was encouraged to utilize the services at CSD, and they have helped me succeed in my program in many ways. I live with a mental health condition called bipolar disorder, which can cause depressive moods, as well as increased energy moods that alternate. And this can impact how someone performs in their daily activities, especially education. Some people may not know that mental health conditions do qualify as disabilities if they're impacting your functioning, as well as physical disabilities, and are just as important to get help and support for. I also have a sleep disorder and become sleepy at certain times throughout the day. Fortunately, I have had a safe space at the Center for Students with Disabilities, who enable me to succeed by offering me space to take naps and rest, where I can regain energy and attend my classes later in the day. I have a very long schedule, sometimes I come in at eight AM and I don't leave till eight PM, and I have large gaps in between classes. Um, I feel very supported here and safe in this space. There is a room with a computer lab where you can study in a quiet area, which I find to be very helpful, to go to between classes and do my schoolwork there. The accommodations I receive on exams, um, and through the CSD help me succeed as well, including extra time on exams, extra time to, to submit assignments, sensitivity to lateness, a note taker, and more, and this is a graduate program. The CSD offers many more accommodations depending on the needs of each student. Additionally, I had to leave the OT program in two thousand seventeen. That was the first time that I had entered the program, and I had to reapply and continue in two thousand twenty. My condition was untreated and I needed to leave at that time. And the CSD did everything they could to try to help me through. When I came back with my condition properly, you know, treated better, they opened me with open arms and were kind and sensitive to my needs. I am grateful for the support they have given me and other students in my cohort and in the school, as well as the services, um, that have helped me with my academics to succeed. I believe that more people should come to the CSD and not be fearful to utilize their services, and, um, so that they have to offer them, such as taking, um, taking exams and classes can be very stressful, and these opportunities to help us are in our favor for support, not against us. It is time to end the stigma and end the, the type of thinking that getting services means that you're not smart enough or you're taking advantage of the system when in reality you're getting support to help you succeed. And change these thoughts, such as getting the service will enable us to succeed to the best of our int- intellectual potentials. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Is there a question? She needs the microphone, she needs a microphone, the people, they can't hear. Thank you.
Hey, I applaud your work, I'm the parent of a grown person who's LD and has classification. But just today, I was talking to some students, I teach in the Health and Human Performance, and Dr. Deborah Weiss, and one student who failed the midterm confided to me that he has test anxiety. And I asked him if he had a classification of LD, he said no. What do we do, I've heard this before, um, President, it's a, it's a problem, some people just panic, they have test anxiety. What can we do? I mean, I teach stress management in addition to other things, maybe we need more stress management for them, but is there something you can suggest to help these students?
What I will suggest, uh, the VP can respond, but what I will suggest is there's staff here that will give you directly the information on where you can help the student. But always go to Student Affairs or go to the Office of Disability Services. They will take care of the student for sure.
Because he's, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you for being courageous, thank you to the student. Are there other announcements or updates? I see members of our student government, I wanted to be sure, let me parent, let me go over and summarize some information before, you can come to the mic, babe, it's fine, but I just want to, I want to be sure today, um, we were reminded it's time to register. We did get a food services update today. We got some updates about student resources and information. Um, I asked everybody to be sure they read the annual report. The day of giving is November twenty-ninth. Our campus and fac- faculty holiday party is December first, hang in there, the snacks are coming. The, I reminded you all that the provost search has begun, and we are working on other searches. I reminded you to tell students to go to the Welcome Center. I reminded you that we're working on more faculty support for all kinds of matters. I reminded you that I wanted you to continue to be patient with the Capitol projects. All right, we have a member of our student government that has a question or a comment, yes, yes.
Hi, everybody, um, just want to let you guys know of a few events that we're having in upcoming days. So November twenty-second is going to be our Thanksgiving feast right here in the atrium from twelve PM to two PM, and also to cater for evening students, five-thirty to seven PM. Um, yeah, so there's also going to be a tree lighting ceremony, um, on December eighth from twelve to two in the atrium. And also there's a end-of-the-year holiday celebration on December thirteenth. The date, the time is to be decided yet.
Fantastic, thank you. Thank you to our student leaders, uh-oh, there may be another, I see Miss Sheila.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to announce myself, so, um, my name is Sacha Handtrip1, I'm the current treasurer of the Student Government Association. So please feel free to come speak to me if you guys have any questions, concerns regarding students and issues that you guys are currently facing.
Congratulations to our student leaders. Leadership skills are built one experience at a time, and we're so proud of you. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone, good afternoon, Madam President. Students, faculty and staff, my name is Antonio Velasquez, and I'm a proud veteran at York College, majoring in interdisciplinary studies. I wanted to take a moment to thank President, Vice President Williams, Larry Eaton, and so many others for their support, not only for me as a student, but veteran, but by offering me an opportunity to work in the Office of Veteran Affairs to serve other veterans. Thank you to the staff and admissions, the registrar, the bursar, and all throughout the college for their efforts to support academic success for our veterans and their families here at York College. I also want to welcome everyone here today to join us in honoring our veterans right before Veterans Day and the Faculty Lounge Room located in room two D zero one. Today is also the Marine Corps' two-hundred-and-forty-seventh birthday, so happy birthday to all my Marines and separate Fidelis.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. All right, Veronica has something from the Zoom. Speak loud so everybody can hear you.
Has the school increased spring twenty-twenty-three enrollment cap from twenty-two to forty for online classes? If so, this will take away students from in-person classes, and it will affect the quality of instructions.
I'm asking the provost to respond, thank you. The question is about the classroom, um, capacity for online classes.
Right, but the question was whether or not the enrollment cap on, um,
For online classes.
Online classes have been increased to four, no, that is not the case, this cap is still set at twenty-two. Um, if that is not the case, and that is, um, the stake, and will be rectified as soon as we are informed of it.
All right, very good, thank you Provost Ravel. If you have questions relevant to your academic program, please continue to ask your department chairs, your dean, or go to the provost's office, and of course, always ask for help at the Welcome Center. Are there other questions, announcements, anything up there? How's everybody doing, we're good? Do you like this, is this good, you like the format, so-so? Okay. Can you do me a favor, and if you have an additional suggestion, send an email, right? This is your campus, this is just one mode of communication that we want to facilitate. If you don't think it works, let us know, right? Um, we are going to do things to make sure you get the information. I have been asking for us to be laser-focused on transparency and communication, and it does take time to come from where we were as far as a social media footprint and a, um, website functionability, right? All these different pieces to be sure people are informed takes a little bit of time, but I think we are trying to keep momentum going. Thank you to the team in Institute of Advancement, thank you to the communications people, thank you for everybody. Um, anybody else have an announcement? Anything good, going, going, all right, well, help yourself to the snacks, please go to Veterans Day event, please put the other events on your schedule, and remember, this is your campus. We want to know what you think, and we want you to stay involved, have a wonderful day.